Good evening. My name is Joe Sternowski, Chair of the Rockport Planning Board. And given that we have a quorum, I am officially calling this meeting on January 26th at 5:34 PM to order. Planning Board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the Select Board. Our charge is to ensure that the applications that come before us comply with the town's land use ordinance and the Rockport Comprehensive Plan. The board must determine whether there is sufficient evidence in the record, which is the material supplied by the applicant, to support a decision to approve the application by comparing it to the requirements of the ordinance or the statute. And so before I get started with the the other items on the agenda, we do have Phil Saucier here this evening to give us a brief training session on finding a fax. And what I'd like to do before Phil gets started is I'd like to propose just a small change to the agenda. And that is to move the approval of the minutes to the end of the meeting. Right now it's at the beginning of the agenda. So just a quick vote, all in favor? Okay, and it's unanimous. I got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 0, 0. Okay, and the other thing I need to do is, which I should have done first, is I'd like to seat two alternates. I'd like to seat John Veman and Victoria Condon as full voting members this evening. So with that, we'll get started and I'll turn it over to Orion and Phil.
Okay, well, thank you all for joining us at the meeting today. And Phil, thank you very much for attending this meeting as well. So I've asked Phil, had a few meetings with Phil so he could attend this meeting so that he could express the purpose behind the findings of facts and conclusions of law, why we have to do that. And to serve as, I guess, your questionnaire, if you have any questions to follow up with. And he can make everybody feel comfortable about why we're doing what we're doing. So with that, Phil, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Sure, yeah, thanks for having me. And this is a pretty discreet topic and it's something I typically include in a larger training. But but I know Ryan has mentioned you've had a number of questions over the last year or so, two couple of years about findings of fact, how extensive they have to be. So I'm just going to give the general. It doesn't actually take very long because the court's been pretty clear on this, sort of general requirements. And then I think that might be more helpful in the remaining minutes is answer some question, any questions you guys have. So just sort of as an initial, sort of to start from the beginning is that is is that the main courts, it's really come from a series of of decisions from the main law court have said that that boards, planning boards in this case, must issue findings of fact and conclusions of law to support their decisions. And if you don't do that, or if they're insufficient, like what the court will do at the Superior Court level likely, but even the law court will get there, the Superior Court did not, is send it right back to you. Because what the courts have said is that they're not in a position to essentially decide whether you have made certain findings or not, or what what under, what facts underlie your decisions. And there's also a couple series of cases where the courts are saying, we're not going to infer that either, because there's been some litigation around, well, you could maybe infer what the findings were because of the minutes, for example, or other comments that are made, or maybe just the record itself. And the court said, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look through the record. We're not gonna look through the plans. That's not what we're gonna do. They're reviewing your decision on what we call an appellate basis, which means all they're really doing, and it's actually a somewhat limited review if you ever appealed, is to determine whether what decision you made was supported by substantial evidence in the record and was not an error of law or or somehow arbitrary or capacious. So to be able to just employ that standard, they have to see if it was actually supported by substantial evidence record as you have put it out there. So there's two parts to that, right? So there's findings of fact and conclusions of law. Findings of fact are just that. So those are the facts of the case. And sometimes they can be right up front. So if you're looking at a form, it's 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 as simple as who is the applicant, what are they asking to do? You know, the dimensions of the project, the actual facts. So before you get to decide, you know, what the facts mean, it's it's really just a recitation of what what's being asked of you. The conclusions of law are, is when the board applies those facts to the relevant ordinance provisions and deciding whether the applicant meets those provisions. So those are your conclusions. So to take an easy one, you know, the I'll just take a very easy one, cannot be more than three feet, three stories. So under that finding, and they're proposing a two-story building, right? So under that finding, you said applicant meets the standard because it's under three, three stories. Simple as that. It's just connecting the dots, applying the facts to the law, which in this case is your ordinance. The best way to do it, in my view, is to use your ordinance as a checklist. And if 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 you have it ahead of time, that's even easier. It's, you know, I think for planning boards, sometimes there can be a substantial number of standards, but once you have a form, say your site plan review form, it's it's also helpful to have it on a on a form, because then you are also ensuring that you're 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 reviewing each of those standards. That's why I like it as a checklist. You didn't miss anything. So you have all the the 10 standards or more that you're going to be required right on a form. And you just go through them, you go down through them and make findings and conclusions a lot on each of those. I think that's that's a good practice. Finally, there there's some rationale for it. And this is what the courts look at. So I think it's helpful when you're thinking about why we need to do this. There's this practical purpose, which I suggested was to make sure you you considered each review criteria and that there's sufficient evidence in the record to support it. So you've actually gone through that analysis. And I know you're bored and you do do that out loud. You know, you do usually do that orally very thorough. What you'll need to make sure is then at least have a sentence or more that just makes that in a in a fine, in a written document. The second sort of purpose for these is that it does provide detailed reasons for the board's decision, both for the applicant and interested parties to judge, so they could judge whether they agree with your decision. It's almost a due process consideration to decide whether there's sufficient grounds for an appeal. It's hard if there's there's no there there, it's hard for someone to understand why the board did something and whether they would agree with you. And then I'd already mentioned what I consider the third rationale, which is that it provides a clear record if it's Superior Court. If it's appealed, and that's because the courts have decided, have said they would put, pull it back to you, push it back to you if they are not sufficient. And then finally, there is a fourth requirement. There is one legal requirement. Actually, it's found in the Main Freedom of Access Act. And the FOA law requires a written decision, and this is from the law, that explains the basis for a decision for conditional approvals or denials. Interestingly enough, it doesn't say for approvals, but it's it's read that way. And almost every approval is a conditional approval. Anyway, the board has the inherent right to establish conditions. And so, and you did, boards typically do. And so it would kind of, this law would be triggered if the court made laws weren't anyway. But I just, I did want to point that out that that's in FOA. And I and I have seen some attorneys use FOA as as one of the counts if they're, if they're, if they're challenging a decision. So that's that's just a very quick overview. I I don't know if, I think Orion said that you guys have a copy of the main municipal, if you look at the municipal association planning board manual, I think they do a pretty good job of of essentially saying what I just said in different words. It's summarizing it. They also provide some examples from other towns and their appendix, appendices. Once, and there's a lot of different examples out there. I know that you've had some couple remands. And the type of findings of fact conclusions law that were developed after remand were fairly extensive. And I think that that was partly because we were in litigation and there were very specific types of arguments that were being made and you want, you want to make sure on remand that you're addressing that so it wouldn't get kicked back. I would say that you, not every findings of fact, not to scare you away, needs to look like that with that kind of, you know, in-depth pages and pages and pages. I do not think that that's what the courts are saying. I think your standard run-of-the-mill review would be an ICV cell times a sentence or two sentences or so under each of the standards. That's it. The application meets the standard because, the standard because it does, right? You point to the thing that says it does. That's it. It can be two to three pages, for example, but as long as you have something, that's what the court's going to look at. If you even skip one, that's a potential basis for appeal. And it's, we'd rather not have to go through that machination and time and and effort and cost, quite frankly, to get it back to you. So that's that, that's another rationale for doing it. So that's just the general review, but I think it might be more helpful to see what you've been, you know, struggling with or questions you have around this, because I know that Orion said it's been a topic on the, at the board level here.
Start. Could Phil, could you delineate the differences between what should be documented in the minutes versus the finding of facts? Should the minutes just be administrative?
Yeah, in my view, they they're just administrative. There's actually no requirement for minutes under main law. FOA only require, although I know it's a practice of many boards and not a, not necessarily a bad practice, but under the Freedom of Access Act, all that you are required to make certain notices and what, and all you're required to actually do is a record that the meeting happened, who was at the meeting, the votes that occurred. And and the votes that occurred, actually, that's it. Those are the requirements. So you, that that's all, that's all the Freedom of Access Act requires. If you're gonna, so in other words, your minutes could be somewhat simple. Simply that you 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 met on this application, it was, you know, you don't need to give the details if you're gonna have findings back anyway. The other thing that the Freedom of Access Act says, and I know that you guys do this, is recordings qualify for purposes of that, of that those minimal requirements you are required to note. So in other words, who's present, votes taken, that kind of thing. Recordings actually qualify. Basic minutes, though, are still fairly good practice because it's a good summary. If you just need to quickly look, you know, not everyone wants to sit back, back, sit back through a three-hour meeting or whatever, how long they are. So they're good, like, just notes on exactly like what happened, but you don't need to get into the ever, what every other person said. I think that, I think that's too much work and not necessary. Particularly when you do have recording. So if you ever did need to have it for whatever reason, appeal, I mean, you have a recording, you can get transcripts if necessary.
Phil, is some oral recording adequate, or do we have to do a video?
No, it either, either video or or audio qualify under that standard. Yep.
And I think you were clear in stating that every single application, final application that comes before the board does need a finding of facts. Is that correct? Even as simple as they are?
Okay, that's right, even if they're very simple. And again, that's why it's actually good to have a, to take the time to develop a checklist, because then it's really not that onerous. Once you have your form, it's just simply going through it and making a, you're already doing it anyway, usually orally. I mean, I've been in your meetings, you're already doing it. And so just having someone write it down under each provision, you know, meets the standard because of the applicant, because of the application materials show that it, you know, blah, blah, blah. Yeah.
I I have a question. On the ordinance, we have, we go through various major sections, and then we have a lot of minor points under each one of those applying standards. And in many cases, there are a considerable number of the standards that just are not applicable. Do do all of those have to be enumerated, or is it enough to just list it and say not applicable?
You can just say NA, yeah. The other thing is, is you could have, although you could have, you know, separate decision forms for different types of applications, although I don't know if there's a lot of different ones for, you know, you'd have your sub, you could have subdivision one, for example, and a site plan, review, site plan form. Subdivision is actually somewhat easier in the sense that it's like 13 or 14, whatever they are, they're from the state law. So it's it's a little bit more delineated. Your your standards, I I will say, I will admit, are fairly extensive. Right? So there's there's sort of a lot of subparts and there, they're just simply are. It's not, you know, I've seen a number of ordinance where it looks more like subdivision ordinance where there's, you know, A through Z, and you just make sure you hit them. And I think yours, yours does meander a little bit around, and there's some nuances, like I'm thinking of like the architectural standards or there are different parts. But I think at a minimum, if you have, you've seen the one we did, we helped with that, that was much more extensive on the remand. It doesn't, you know, as long as you say architectural standards and you say it meets these standards for the following reasons, without having to like list out all the different sort of subparts of that, that I, that would be sufficient in my view. So it's just the header, essentially the header of it, I think would be fine. The other thing is, is there's a practical side to this, too. If you, if there are people who are commenting at your meetings and you know what the specific issue is going to be, you make sure to make a few more extensive findings on that particular provision. You know, I mean, it's it's usually not a, to the extent that there's an application that people may have, may have concerns about, it's usually not a secret what the appeal is going to be over, right? So, you know, make sure you don't give a reason for a remand by not fully addressing those specific standards even more so.
Orion, have you had an opportunity to share the current template that we're using for the finding of facts with Phil?
I haven't sent in the current template, because I kind of wanted us to get a few more steps in it, and then I was gonna send it off.
So maybe in the end, he could take a peek at that and just comment on it.
Yep, happy to work with Orion on it. Yep. Any other, any other questions?
I have one, Phil. Whenever we have a pre-application, and then that leads into the final, final application, do we need to document that there was a pre-application of the findings of facts and conclusions of law?
Yeah, I like to see that. I like to see at the start of the findings of fact, just a quick summary of the process. It's just, it's more helpful. It's it's really less for the court and more for sort of a record of what happened here. So in other words, met on this day with a pre-application, had a public hearing on this date, met on the state, voted on that date. I kind of, I think it kind of is helpful if you're, so that if you ever do need to look at those, you could, it's sort of, it's a history. Okay, the history of the planning board's review.
Okay.
Yeah.
So along that line, we typically treat the pre-application as an informal process and give the the applicant an opportunity to come in, ask us some questions about a proposed project, and we might just share some sensitivities we have, none of it being binding. Is it? How should, how should we handle information that was presented during the pre-application? Can that be included as factual information that influenced our decision? Or do we only accept the information that's included in the final application itself?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would point to the application itself and the public and anything that happened after that point. So the public hearing, because testimony, for example, testimony is also evidence. So, you know, the public hearing, you know, any kind of conversations you had during the review process with the applicant that you learned something, that's when you'd point to it, to the extent that it's something that there's a way to kind of get it in, though, like in other words. So if you heard something in the pre-application process that would have impact, impact a standard and for whatever reason didn't come up, once you're going through each standard, you can ask the applicant at that point and say, I understand that you had said during the pre-application that you were going to do this to meet the standards. Is that still true? Is that still part of your application? Yes. So then you can say, you know, based on testimony, that kind of thing.
Okay.
John?
Yeah. So it's it's sort of along the same lines of where Joe was going. If there is something in a pre-application that gets dropped off along the way, but isn't noted that it dropped off, for some reason that keeps showing up in in appeals, that that somehow is a commitment somebody made or, you know. In other words, the plan had changed from the pre-application to the final application.
Yeah.
But because something was said in the pre-application about the plan that wasn't noted as changing, it was presumed to still be in the plan. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think so. I, I.
I'm trying not to get specific, but.
I just say, we're probably both talking about the same thing that actually occurred during the past year.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, so I, I guess I'd answer it this way. One is, yeah. The approval is based on the actual application. I'd say that it's actually based on the final plan, because because plans do change over the course of a review, and they should change in some cases. So you're actually, whatever is the final plan, that's what you actually approved. There is this sort of understanding, however, that the edit, the application materials that are part of the final plans, or the things that hadn't changed, are inherently sort of part, one of the conditions of the approval. In a sense that you're approving what they told you they were going to do, right? And so in their, in their written words and in their plan. And so that that becomes essentially part of your approval. I think it's a stretch to to say something that was said in a pre-application before the application was even put together, and before it was then various iterations happened over. Would somehow be an obligation unless the planning board specifically put it as an obligation, as a condition of approval, like it was noted. We, this is a condition of approval. Otherwise, I would, I wouldn't consider that part of the plan. I would say that's pre-application. It's it's non-binding at that point. Essentially, you're still in this workshop mode, and things can change and do change over the course of that process. If you want, again, I don't have to repeat myself, because I don't know the specifics. I don't need to get into specifics. If it's something you actually want to be a condition, then bring it up during the, during the process and make it a condition. I guess alternatively, you could do the opposite, right? Which is if things have changed, and you could just make that clear for the record during your review that I understand that this used to be part of it, but it's no longer. Is that right? That kind of thing, just to clarify for everybody. So it's a little hard to anticipate what those are. Sometimes you don't even know it's an issue till after the fact, but if you know what it is, it's good to kind of clarify it at the time of your approval. All right.
Right, I think that information was helpful. Thank you.
Good. Okay, yeah, and I'll continue to work with Orion and help refine the template and answer any questions through him that you have.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Phil. Appreciate it.
Prior to Phil starting, I misspoke when I said that the vote on changing the agenda was 5, 0, 0. It's actually 6, 0, 0. I miscounted.
Actually, it's 4, 0, 0. Joe, it's 4, 0, 0, because we weren't seated.
Oh, okay. You're right. I didn't seat you yet. So it was.
Yeah.
So the vote should have been 4, 0, 0. Okay, got that technicality out of the way. Orion, could you just quickly review how we're going to monitor public comments this evening?
Yes, so I've got the chat function open. And if anybody makes a comment, they can make a comment there, and I can let you know, Joe, that someone would like to speak. And then you can, whenever it's appropriate, address that. There's also the hand raise function. If anybody wants to use that, I can see that someone's raising their hand, or Joe, you can see it, and then you can bring it up at that point.
Right. Okay, good. Okay, so with that, I guess we're ready to get started then. Let me continue on here. Let's see, we seated our two alternate, full voting members already. Before we start, does anyone on the board wish to identify conflict of interest on any of the applications presented tonight that would make it difficult for you to judge these applications fairly and objectively? If so, I ask that you identify these conflicts now. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed. Orion, have we received any written comments from the public prior to this meeting?
No, we've not.
Nothing. Okay, thank you. All right, we're not gonna have anybody monitor tonight because we'll watch for hand raises. And so tonight we have one application for a subdivision application on the agenda and one pre-application. And so the first one this evening is a consideration of a pre-application review for a commercial style building for a jewelry making located at 589 Commercial Street, Rockport, and it's identified as map 14, lot 19. And it's in the 907 zoning district. The property is owned by and being represented by George McIntyre. And so just to briefly overview the pre-application process, the pre-application is not required, but it's it's suggested. And it's an opportunity for the applicant to come before the board and ask us questions about the project. And likewise, the board will provide some feedback or sensitivities or things that we see in the project that would cause concerns. So with that, Mr. McIntyre, if you're prepared to start, I'll turn the floor to you.
Hey, Joe, it's McKinstry, Greg McKinstry.
Sorry, McKintry, sorry.
And Greg, he is in.
Okay, I didn't know that I unmute myself. I got it. I don't know why my video isn't showing up. Well, at least on my screen. Do you see me?
No.
Um, is that a problem or? Sorry, I haven't used Zoom before, so I'm not completely familiar.
There should be.
Why don't we just try it real good?
Uh, Greg, in the bottom left corner of your screen, if you hover your mouse, there should, a bar should pop up and you should see a video option.
So it says, okay, here's what, it's got the wrong source, so. And I've got it on the correct source now, and it is saying it can't start. There it is. Okay, safer.
There you go.
Sorry about that. This is my first Zoom meeting, so. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so I I live at the residence on 589 Commercial Street. I'd like to do my jewelry here. It involves hot work. I do, well, I would do casting if I had an appropriate space for it, which at the moment it's not an appropriate space, so I I looked for a commercial building to do, and this is what I've come up with. It's this the building that you have on on the site plan, it's it's built, it's a clearance building, so there's not really an opportunity to make architectural modifications to it. And so I wanted to come and see if it's something that can be done, or if I should go back to the drawing board.
Okay, Orion, do you want to share the the photo of the application?
Just a minute here. All right, so Greg, just tell me which page you want to show. I mean, here's the site plan, if you want to start with this.
Yeah, so that's the site plan. That's, I mean, that's how it would be situated with the end wall towards Route 1 and the sidewalls facing south. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know if you want me to say anything else about the, about the site, but it's, it seems pretty basic to me.
Okay.
Um, so the the building you see there in the picture, it's not the building itself. It's a smaller garage-style building, but similar, similar architecture. I I made these elevations because I, this is what I got. I have some, I've included some some plans that the building vendor refers to as elevations, but I think that this is more, you know, superimposed. And then this is what the, uh, these are some of the things the building vendor has referred me to when I asked him for elevations, so. Anyways, it's a, it's a corrugated metal building. And and that's pretty much it. I'd like to see if it can, if it can work or if not.
Okay. Um, I'll open it for the board. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. If you could scroll to the, to the flat map.
Um, if you could scroll to the, to the flat map. Yes, uh, it says um the caption aimed at the um existing building says it's a mismatch between aerial imagery, et cetera, et cetera. What is the mismatch? Is it the size?
Well, so you see how the driveway just ends abruptly before getting to
Oh, there. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, just that little area there, it's you know, that, that's what I worked from. I worked from the gist for, for the moment before getting
But the, the
uh, you know, with garland doors here or something, something like that.
Relative size of the existing building and the planned building are accurate?
I, I have no reason to think otherwise. Um, this is this is taken from GIS. It's done at the same scale that the GIS
Okay.
uh purports to use. So I, I believe that, I believe that the relationship you know, that, that proportion is accurate. Thank you.
John?
So um Gregory, have you reviewed the architectural review standards?
In uh, so, yeah, I, I spoke about that with Orion uh shortly after the um after contracting uh with the vendor. Um, and uh, and I had some familiarity with uh, the um you know, particular tastes of Rockport. Um. Yes.
Um, so I'm, I'm just starting to go down the list here and um I guess this would qualify as an addition or where are we on this in the architectural review standard section? Maybe Jeff could jump in on this, but um basically, it, it's pretty much specifies all the way through here that um you're looking for um visual harmony with the other buildings and this is a completely different building from the other buildings. Did I miss something?
These are in one thousand three for anybody who's curious with the, the section of the ordinance.
Yeah, section, page ten four, one thousand three. Um. I'm just trying to think, are, have you seen something here that I'm missing, Greg, or?
I, I doubt it.
Well, I, I guess I, what I'm suggesting is it doesn't seem to conform.
So to, to give this a little bit of um uh color to, from other, some other projects is that one of the things that we look for is um harmony with uh surrounding parcels as the, as the ordinance says in the first paragraph under one thousand three. So if this were a property that were um, an industrial park, say, a, a metal, a metal clad steel building would be um, um, okay, under that section because it's harmonious with other metal clad steel buildings. But the fact that the building that's on this photograph in front of us is not a metal clad steel building. And I'm not entirely familiar with all of the surrounding architecture, but that leads me to I think John's point, which was it, it doesn't seem harmonious with at least what's in this uh image. That's not to say that steel, that metal structures are categorically not harmonious, but I would think that the metal clad um blank facade uh, that's of a much larger scale than any of the buildings directly surrounding it um would be the, the challenge there.
Uh, yeah, this, Joe, I, I would agree with that. I, I also looked at section one thousand three, the architectural review standards. Um, and that, that general section up front, as you uh stated, talks about it. And also back in um the building materials on page ten dash five, uh, it talks about building materials and um talks about where possible sustainable long wearing recyclable um uh materials and siding, uh, the use of traditional building materials to Northern New England, including wood siding, brick materials. So it's not a requirement, but it strongly encourages that the uh, the buildings look at using those kinds of natural um sightings. Oh, so wouldn't have a problem with a steel structure, but the structure would need to, steel structure would need to look um, a little bit more like it fit into that neighborhood. And I know I'm not an architect, but I know just from a layman looking at other steel buildings um around the uh, the mid-coast area, there are things that can be done to them, both with landscaping and siding uh to make them look um like they fit into uh, uh neighborhoods such as uh those located along Route One.
Joe, Victoria had her hand up.
Yes, Victoria.
I, I want some clarification. Um, I don't know if we can go back to this um mockup of the building, but what is the orientation? Are the gable ends facing the street? Yeah, it's gonna have the garage doors. So the garage doors would face directly to Route One?
No, the garage doors would be facing towards uh towards the house.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is Tom. I have a question about the scale of an operation. Uh, when you say jewelry making, that sounds to me like a craft operation. And this building, just on the face of it, seems to me out of scale with an endeavor of that sort.
So it, it, do I need to raise my hand or get, or do I need to stand here? So um
Go.
The, the in, this would not be used entirely for my jewelry making. This is, this is more space than I immediately need for my jewelry making. I need a uh, you know, a fire safe building where I can put my casting equipment, some other equipment, and I would also put some of my personal property in the garage, so, or in the, in the building. It, it was, you know, it would be, it would be multipurpose in that sense. So it's, I, I, I'm not, I'm not locating a, a large jewelry ma- manufacturer uh right there. It's, but that would be, that's the primary purpose uh of building a metal building to have a good fire safe place for uh for doing stuff like casting and soldering and, and some welding and things like that.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to cover just a couple other points um with respect to the project. Uh, I just took a quick look at lot coverage. Uh, it doesn't look like there's any issue there. This by very, very rough estimates looks like less than twenty percent lot coverage and the thirty-three percent I think is permitted in that area, so that's not an issue. Um, I don't know if we had a scale on the building height. The, the max building height is thirty-four feet to the top of the eve. Um, so I assume that it fits within that. And in this area, the maximum building size for a single building is ten thousand square feet. And again, this one is uh far under ten thousand max. So um, I don't see any issue in, in those other points uh that I, I took a look at.
No, the height is listed as thirty feet on the drawings. I presume that that's accurate.
Okay.
I, I do have a question though about, about um section ten oh two landscaping requirements. You mentioned in your um uh, in your, your, your document that there's no immediate money available to do any landscaping or make any changes like that. And yet this is right on Route One, which is an area that, that um is an approach to the town and is a um, has certain requirements in section ten, ten oh two um for um what, what is, what is, what, not what it should look like, um, but a, a planting schedule and quality of proposed for non-residential developments. Uh, it appears to require or, or heavily suggest that there be um some landscaping to shield, I think, to shield the building from, from um uh, totally, totally dominating the, the view on Route One.
Yeah, you, I think you're correct, Jan. There are, are landscaping requirements and they're all listed in the ordinance. Um, and that would, uh, would help, I'm sure, um soften the, the view a little bit too.
So, um I, I guess that what I was getting at was um Scott Bickford had mentioned a building across from offshore restaurant that um it has basically a forest between the road and that he thought, well, something like that might work. Um, I, I mean a few plantings, there's a budget for that. There's not a budget for installing a mature forest that will completely screen everything from view. I, I, I mean, it, that, that was my understanding when I spoke to Scott, um, that it would take a forest. And that's not feasible.
Well, yeah, the, the landscape requirements aren't for a forest. They're a little bit more reasonable than that. Um, if, if you're, have a building that you're completely trying to block, um, then you want to have a forest. But that's not the requirement for landscaping. Yeah, so I, if I tried to summarize it, I would say that um, and from some of the comments I've heard here and my own feeling, I don't think the board um is opposed to a, a steel structure there. If the steel structure maybe had a, some kind of facade on the front and the sides, the parts that were visible from the road uh, that would be something that was more harmonious with the neighborhood. So it could still be a steel structure underneath, could still have the fireproof characteristics that you're looking for, but um maybe something that blends a little better with the neighborhood.
If I might, Joe, also having just a big square box, that, that is suggested as really not particularly aesthetic in the, in the ordinance where you have long unadorned facades and so forth. So there's really no architectural interest in a structure like this.
Well, and again, Tom, I'm not, I don't want to tell the applicant how to do it, but I mean, there are things that could be done architecturally to the front of the building to break that up a little bit, I think, um with, with small changes. But that's all up to the applicant.
John's got his hand up, Joe.
John?
Well, I'm wondering, I, I was looking on other, in other places for an actual um, lot, you know, where does the building sit on the lot? And I don't see it. I was wondering, Gregory, if it would be possible to cite the building further back.
Unfortunately, it's not. That's all what, wetlands.
Oh, okay.
Everything back there is just completely wetlands. There's no room back there, unfortunately. I would love to put it back there if I could, but uh
Yeah.
It, it can't.
Alright, then I'm, I'm also a little, still a little confused because it looks like the, the peak of the building um the way you've got it shown in the where I can see the, the existing building over on the left, you've got your proposed building on the right, but the peak is facing Route One.
Yes.
Uh, but then you're saying the garage doors are going to be facing the house.
Yes, they are. They're on the sidewall, not the end walls.
Okay, because there's a picture here of doors on the end walls, so.
No, that's not, that shouldn't be on the end walls. That's on the, that's on the side. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. This, this is um, this picture is to give a sense of the architecture. This is not the actual building. Since I could not get elevations from the building vendor, I produced my own and I provided a photograph of a similar building. That is not, not the building. That it's not on the, the, the garage bays are not on the end walls. They're on uh, the, they're on the sidewalls. Sorry about that confusion.
So the drawing is more accurate than the photograph?
Well, i- in terms of an elevation, it is, and the photograph is so that you have a sense of the um, you know,
Right.
what the siding material is like.
But this building comes with three doors, a load, loading van, loading size?
So two, two bay doors and a, and a walk-in door.
Walk-in door. Do you propose, do you think you're going to have a need for those or that's just the way the building is, is designed?
Uh, I think that I am, I I, I would like to have both of the bay doors.
Okay.
So again, the side that's facing Route One would basically be a wall of metal. It would be featureless, no breaks, no windows.
Pretty much.
Doors. Okay.
So I, I, I'm I don't want to waste your time on this. I'm mostly want, wanting to get a sense of if this is okay. And the sense that I'm getting is that it's not. Um, and so so that's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of looking for, if, if I could. You know, I don't want, I don't want to take all your time on this if it's just not going to be okay, because this is pretty much, this is what I can get with this building. Maybe some small cosmetic changes. I'm, I'm not sure, but in that case, I would, I, I don't know what those are. Um. I guess I would need you to tell me.
So I think your, um, your summary is correct, Greg, in that there are concerns about the uh the appearance of the building in that neighborhood. Um, and so again, typically during a pre-application, we give you this feedback. If you wanted to consider going back and making some architectural modifications to the building uh based on the comments that we've provided you, um, you might do that and then come back in, in a final application um with some changes on it that you believe would be acceptable to the board. Uh, we don't, in a pre-application, we don't vote on whether something is acceptable or not. It's just intended to be an informational exchange between the applicant and the board.
And please don't think that you're wasting our time. This is what we are here to do is help um, and to look at proposals. So you're not wasting time at all.
No, not at all. And let me also say that the, the board certainly encourages businesses in Rockport. Um, we see a lot of small businesses come before the board. We do not want to discourage um small businesses from developing in Rockport. Um, we're just trying to do a balance here, making sure that things fit into the community, the neighborhoods that they're intended for, and also serve the purpose of the, uh, the applicants.
Joe, Jeff has his hand up.
Yes, Jeff.
Um, I have a question about the, um, you said something in regard to um uh, fireproof structure and is it your intention based on what um, activity you use the building for, the, the jewelry making? Um, or whatever it is you do that you need a certain uh non-combustible building type in order to um, to do this kind of work? Like you could, is, is there something prohibiting you from building, um, say a pole barn that's made of wood as opposed to the steel structure?
I think a steel structure is substantially safer than a wooden structure when you know, when you're dealing with two thousand degree molten metal. It, it's, you know, can you do it? Yes, you certainly can. I, I have in the past in uh in different locations done casting in a wooden structure. I would like to have a non-combustible structure where I'm uh, where I'm doing that work. It, it's just, it's not like it's impossible, but um I feel much Feel much more comfortable.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it appears as though. Based on our cursory look that. The building. The the main hangup that we have is is merely the appearance of the building from the public way. And whether that is something that can be resolved through plantings or changes to the the. Adding fenestration, adding windows, or changing the eve detail, or changing the building cladding material. Something to, at least on the. Parts of the building that are visible from the public way, make it more harmonious with the surroundings or. Any of the other things that are listed in the in the ordinance architectural standards. Apart from that, I mean, it's relatively straightforward if this was an application. To us, I I'm guessing on my limited experience. Everything else is really quantifiable, and this is the one that is that really comes down to a quality judgment. Of does it? Satisfy that that section. So I mean, that's that's my primary. Concern with this. I think that I'm just echoing what others have said.
I think, though, that George is exactly right that he needs a fireproof building. I you know, the idea of a wooden building. I don't think is going to going to be welcomed by the fire department. For for metal fabrication plan. It's just.
Right. I was just wondering if that's that's kind of like a variable that we can't change. Or we can't suggest is to say, well, make this a wood building. They said, well, that doesn't really satisfy the use of it. And it's like, that's perfectly fine. But it means that.
No, but but you might, you might. You know, a clever mural covering the building could change your superiors totally.
Yeah, except that actually is something that our ordinance says could be read as signage and it says not allowed.
Oh, wow, well, yeah, okay. You got you.
Um, yeah, I just, I want to know where our starting point is for for this, so we don't suggest things that he clearly could not do.
Correct.
Greg, does that help you a little bit getting getting a sense of where we are?
It it helps me somewhat. I don't. I mean, again, I don't know how much. How much I can do with this, because as I've mentioned, this is a, this is a clearance building that. There there are limitations to what I can get done with it. And and I'm, I mean, I don't know if I. I'm not entirely sure how to interpret. What you're saying about fenestration, like. If I put five windows on, is that going to? Make the difference? It it's. I don't know. It would be, it would be helpful for me to. Have something specific or or just a yes or a no would be great, too. If that's possible, because. I I'm. Yeah, I don't know how much I can, I don't know how much I can do with this. I do know that there's not a lot of budget for. Or. You know, making it. For dressing it up.
Victoria, did you have a comment?
Just a small comment. Greg, you mentioned that you don't quite need all the space that's there. And I'm wondering if changing the scale of the structure, you've got a 60 by 72. Metal structure. I'm wondering if changing the scale would help the visual impact landscaping and your budget, just something to think about.
I I can imagine that it would. Again, where there, this particular plan is based on a specific. On a specific. Building that was produced for another customer that has been offered to me at a. Cut rate. And so. This building can't. Change from 60 by 72. Could I go and look at something? Else? Go back to the drawing board, certainly. But. But this building. No, this one cannot change. This one can, this one can sort of get a yes or no. And. Yeah.
Sure, sure.
I'm interpreting what I'm hearing as this building is not okay. And there's not like. I I can't get them to bump it out, you know, to give it a little bit of depth on the facade because it's. This is the building that they've got. Or something of that nature. It's just. This is what I'm I'm dealing with at the moment and. So.
Yeah, so again, we don't, we don't vote during the preapplication, but there would be significant concerns based on what I think we're seeing here. If this were to come in for a final approval. So I mean, it's it's up to you what you'd like to do with it, or if you'd like to try to modify it. You might take a ride and look at some other buildings of this type around the area that do have facades on them and maybe get some ideas. And come back in and. File a final application if you if you feel you've got something that you think is going to work.
All right, thanks a lot.
So I'd like to thank you for coming in. Good luck to you. We'd like to see you keep your business here in Rockport. And try to work through something here that'll work for both of us.
Yeah, thanks. I certainly plan on being in Rockport for a long time, so I'm sure we'll see each other again.
Good. Okay, thank you, Greg.
All right, thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening. Is consideration of a revision to a major subdivision named West Rockport Meadows. And it's located at the Rolling Meadows West. In Rockport and identified as map 16. Lot 107-005 and Lot 107-006. Revision is to merge the lots 005 and 006 adjacent lots. The properties are owned by Paul and Karen Grindel and represented by Greg Haney. And so this is a final application, and with that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
My name is Ben Hilt, and I'm representing Greg because Greg had to go to Boston tonight. So he's not here and. I am his partner on the West Rockport subdivision. We did that together. So what, basically what we're trying to do is just eliminate the. Lot 5 and Lot 6A, the the boundary line in between and create just one lot, which is. Yeah, so they they own both lots, the Grindles. So that's. That's basically it. Yep, eliminating that line. And making it one lot instead of two.
Okay, now, as I understand the application, you're not planning on making any other changes to stormwater drainage or roads or anything else?
No.
Okay, simply a merger on paper of the the two lots.
Yes.
Okay, can I just ask a question to start out? We have nothing in the file here. Paul and Karen Grindel apparently own this property, at least that's what it says on the the map. Is there anything, Orion, that was submitted? That delegates the responsibility to these gentlemen? It's just a little odd that they're coming in asking to merge lots that they don't own. Are they, is there a letter or something that says that they're the representative or agent?
Oh, I see.
Typically, that authority will be delegated to someone just so that we know that. The real owners want this to happen.
The 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 Grindles live on Alspur and Greg, you know, where he's he's. Done divided these lots before and done work with the town and stuff. And knew everything. He he thought it would be easier for him to take through this with this application than for them. So that's why he he suggested. Helping him out doing this.
Yep, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. So what we probably ask for maybe in the final approval here is just a letter that. From the Grindles. That just state that they're. You are the representative and that they are at least aware of what's going on here. I'm sure they are, but just something for the record.
Sure.
Okay, so let's let's get into the meat of the review here. So. Board members, any first, any questions of clarification before we get started in in reviewing this?
I would just ask if there are any additional structures planned. On this double lot.
At this point, I think they want, they just like the privacy. That's why they bought the two lots. And I'm not sure where they're going to locate. They're just going to build one home for themselves. Retirement home.
I don't, I don't, if I could, if I may speak, I don't actually think that that's. A question for us to ask at this point, the what's what's in front of us is simply combining these two lots.
That's that's correct.
They would need a new thing to to build something. I do want to point out, though, that according to the existing covenants. On this land, once these two lots are joined, they cannot be separated. Is that well understood by the owners?
Um, I don't know that. Why, why can't they be separated?
Because there's a covenant that says none of these lots can ever be subdivided. Once you join these two lots. It's my understanding from reading the covenants that that's the end of it. They cannot be subdivided.
Well, they must. They've made it quite clear to me. They just want to have one lot.
Well, I would like to see. Something from the owners. Saying they understand and and that they that this is with, they are within the, they will remain within the covenants. That that exist on this property now and for any future owners that they.
I don't, yeah, Jan, I'm not sure that we need a statement saying that they're going to abide by the covenants. I mean, the covenants are there. And they should be available to them to review.
Okay.
I I don't know that we have to ask them for specific things to send a letter.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no question of clarification, I guess what I'd like to do first here before the board deliberates the details of this and goes through this. It's a fairly simple modification is open up a public hearing. As is required on any subdivision. So at this time, 6:37, I would like to open the public hearing. On the West Rockport Meadows subdivision and hear any public comments. Either that were received in written form prior to this meeting or. Individuals from the public that might be online now. Are there any comments that care to be offered?
So far, nobody has made a chat.
Okay. Are there other members of the public president meeting, Orion?
There was somebody that jumped on. Let me check.
Okay, so maybe just for descriptive purposes, on the bottom of the Zoom screen, there's an icon that says chat. If you. Would like to offer any comments or like to be recognized for an input verbally or over video, please indicate it now from the public.
So it was, it's actually Ben here. He's under Kristen Hilt. That's the other person, so Christina, sorry.
Okay, and we did, we did not receive any public comments prior to the meeting either. Is that correct?
There was one person that called about this and they wanted the name changed. It was submitted as Paul and another name. They wanted to change to Paul and Karen. That could have been the owners, but they did not identify themselves as the owners. But that's the only comment that I ever seen about this application.
Okay, okay, so hearing no public input or comments at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:38. And the board will continue reviewing the applications. So. What I'd like to do is direct the board's attention to section nine of the subdivision ordinance. This is a modification. And section nine deals with modifications. Okay, so in section nine, it talks about modifications. And it states that. The board's scope of review shall be limited to the portion of the plan that's changed. So that would be these these two lots and any other suggested changes. And it also suggests that. The procedure for reviewing this would be to use. The final major subdivision procedure. I thought I saw that stated here somewhere.
You did, and Joe, in that, it asks if the board can make a determination on if an additional one is being created or if that's not, and then that. Determines what order the planning boards to follow.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Sure, so it says if the revision involves the creation of additional lots or dwelling units. The procedures for preliminary plan approval shall be followed. And then it says if the revision involves only modification. Of the approved plan without creation of additional lots or dwelling units, the procedure for final plan.
Final plan will be followed. Okay, thank you for that clarification. So so I believe this is just a modification of the approved plan. There are not additional lots, but rather lots are being combined together. So based on the board's review of Article Nine. As a finding of fact, would the board approve? That given that these are combining two existing lots together and not creating any additional lots. That this would be considered a modification and we would follow the procedures of the final plan review. Would anyone care to? Put forward a motion that as finding a fact, what I just stated is true.
I will, I will move that.
Okay, moved by Jan. Is there a second?
All second, Victoria.
Seconded by Victoria. All in favor? Six zero zero, okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move to section eight, which is the final plan approval. And again, we should limit the scope. Of what we review here to the part of the plan that has changed. Okay, so. Shouldn't. Be terribly complicated. So let's take section 8.1 first. The procedure, we've got articles, let's see. Gosh, A through. L, I guess, in that section. I don't know if members of the board have had a chance hopefully to review this in detail. A lot of this, I think, would not apply. What I'd like to do is to pick out the sections. That the board considers are relevant to combining two lots here, identify the the item by letter. And let's talk about why it either does or does not meet that. So start with with item A. Okay, hearing no comments on that. Let's go on to item B. Hearing no comments on item B, let's proceed on to item C. I I do have one question here. Orion, is there any reason to believe that anything would be impacted here? In the federal and state approvals that were originally submitted in the plan?
No.
That those would need update? No, okay. That those would need update? No, okay. Okay, hearing nothing on C, let's go on to item D.
Joe?
Yes.
Just to add on to that question to Orion, um. I mean, I think if, if we start from the point that this was, this, this plan was approved by the town. Um, at some point, I don't know when, but, um, that it met this ordinance.
It did. Yes, that's an assumption. So again, we're only looking at the changes here and the change is the change of a property line to combine two lots together.
Right.
So things that were previously approved on drainage and easements and roads and everything else. Is not for consideration here. That's not being changed.
Understood.
Okay, um, so we're on D, uh, item D.
I have, I have an objection. I don't know if it's an objection, but I'm concerned. That we do not have the applicant or a duly authorized representative. We don't know whether or not this gentleman has been duly authorized because we have not heard from the owners.
Right, I agree, and that was noted, Jan, and that's, that's gonna, um, that's gonna cause this to, uh, not be approved. Without that consent. So let's look at if there's anything else here while we, uh, we're on it. We've got the information in front of us. Item, uh, nothing on D. Um, let's go on to item E.
Hey, Joe.
Yes, Orion.
While we're going through this, could we ask Ben to, um, have the owners attend this meeting and email me? Uh, their deed for this? And then maybe we can get that before we're.
I'm sorry, so you wanna do that right now in real time?
I'm just saying, Ben, Ben is just sitting here. He could reach out to them and ask if they could attend the meeting and supply. Um, the deed.
I don't have that information.
Oh, yeah, okay, alright.
Okay, so at the end, we'll decide how we're gonna handle this and deal with the, uh, the fact that we don't have the owners, um. Here or delegating, uh, authority in a letter. We'll figure out how we deal with that at the end. But I'd like to go through and, and see if there are, uh, other items that we also need to, uh, to look at here. Okay, so we're on item E on page eight dash two. Okay, hearing none, uh, move on to item F. Uh, we just did hold a public hearing, uh, prior to, uh, deliberation on this. Item G. Um, I don't think there's anything that has changed by move, by changing a property line, uh, that would require. Uh, modifications or different consideration by police and fire chiefs. Item H. Okay, again, I think that was, uh, initially considered. In the original, uh, submission that was approved. Okay, um, so hearing none in section.
Joe?
Yes.
Are we, uh, required to? To have, um. Paperwork that shows the butters and the other people in the subdivision have all been notified?
I thought I saw that.
There is, there was a copy of the letters.
Okay, alright, I don't recall, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was in the sheer point.
No, they're there.
Okay, John, uh, can we move on to section eight point two?
Moving on.
Okay, so section eight point two talks about, um, what the submission needs to include that we've received. Uh, the final plan shall include and it lists items underneath there, uh, starting with item A. And so if I can just flag this on item A, the proposed name of the subdivision. Um, as I look through the documentation that was provided to us and also the covenants. I see, um, four different references for the name of this subdivision. I see West Rockport Meadows with an S. I see West Rockport Meadow. I see Rolling Meadow and I see West Rockport Business Park. And so I believe that the documentation needs to be updated to be consistent. Between what's been submitted in the application and the covenants.
So originally it was Russ, West Rockport Business Park. Um, and then. Greg, there, there was one law, um, Greg built his office there on one of the lots. And then, uh, um, somebody else bought another lot and built a dance studio and then we were able to sell the lots for. A dozen years or so. So that's when we turned it into resi- residential.
Right, so I, I don't have a problem with the old documentation. All I want is for the new documentation to be consistent. And right now it's not. Um, if you put the, uh, let's see, if you have, not the original, the, uh, the latest submission. Orion. Okay, so there's a sec, could you blow that up just a little bit bigger?
Yep.
Well, let me ask, what is the proper name today? What are you referring to it as?
West Rockport Meadows, I believe.
Meadows.
Meadow.
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 Meadow, okay, says Meadow there.
That's our LLC.
Yep. Well, LLC, that's, that's the organization. I'm, I just, I just wanna make the name of the subdivision consistent. So if we, if we go down, uh, on, in this document. Um, let's see, this is the one that has attachment A. I think.
West Rock, Meadow subdivision, yeah.
Meadows, uh, it's a, a technicality, but it ought to at least be consistent throughout this. Um, there were other ones in there too.
You know, there, some in the first paragraph, actually, Joe, that you went by, but.
Yeah, that's, I was just going back to look at those.
No, even on the first page. It's all the way through there.
Yes. It said West Rockport Meadows, um. LLC, yeah, in that, um, item one on the first page. It says, uh, we are current owners of the lots depicted the plan entitled final subdivision plan. West Rockport LLC, which is the organization, West Rockport Business Park. On West Street. So to me, again, uh, it looks like it's being referred to as the business park.
Right.
So I don't wanna go through every single one of these, but I, I just wanted to point that out, that the documents aren't, aren't consistent. If you look at the application on the, um, the title block on the drawing. Uh, that still says something different again. Uh, let me see if I could find that. Uh, the one that Garland and Dorsky, uh, prepared. Says West Rockport Meadows, um, on, is that the new one?
Yes.
That's the new one. Okay, that's okay. And. West Rockport Meadows, let's see. Okay, so that's consistent. I, I thought there was one, maybe it was the older one that said something else again. Okay, so, uh, again, I don't wanna go through every single one of these, but looking through the covenants and this drawing. It looks like there are different references to the property. It's a, a trivial thing. But if you could please, before we sign the final copy, go back through and make sure that those are consistent, um, that would be good.
I would wonder whether the, you know, the name change has to be registered with some, somebody in the county. That, that if, or, or at least to find out what is the registered name for this, for the group and for the subdivision.
Orion could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if they file the subdivision map and they file the covenants. I think those would be the two documents that define it.
They would.
Okay. Well, then everything should be changed to match those.
Okay. Okay, so that's, um, that's that. Uh, let me go back to our look through section eight point two. So, uh, let's see, that was, uh, item A, um, item B. Number of acres hasn't changed, uh, that's not, uh, a modification. Item C. Type of sewage, um, it's all septic. That hasn't changed. It's the same as the initial application. Item D, the water supply has not changed. It's well, as was proposed in the original application. Uh, stop me here if I, if I get off track. Um, item E, uh, date, the plan was, uh, submitted is on the drawing. Item F. Uh, names and addresses, the record owner, and again, uh, the record owner and the applicant, we just need the applicant to have. Uh, the authority to represent the owners of the property and, uh, we've discussed that. Item G, uh, location boundaries, uh, the map has, uh, coordinates and, uh. States where this is located, uh, in the town, uh, states, uh, tax map numbers, uh, item H, um. Deed restrictions. Uh, so I believe those would be the covenants, that we do have a copy of updated covenants under the submission. Item I, uh, location size of existing proposed sewers, again, those have not changed from the original plan. Item J, location names and widths of existing proposed streets, those have not changed from the initial plan. Item K, uh, street plans, um. Meeting of plans, traditional village, uh, those street plans have not changed from the initial plan. It's not under, uh, that's not a, uh, item under consideration here. Item L, stormwater management plan, it was submitted with the original plan, it's not changed here. Erosion control and sedimentation really, um, addresses itself most with construction on the property. Uh, we're not talking about a construction application here. Uh, we're just talking about the land. Uh, and an erosion sedimentation plan would be submitted, I believe, with a building permit. Orion, is that correct interpretation?
That is correct.
Thank you. Uh, item N, and like Nancy, width and location of any streets improvements, uh, that was included in the official. Uh, initial plan, uh, no proposed changes to that. Item O, all parcels of land dedicated to public use. Uh, that has not changed from the original plan, and I'll just say I don't believe there are any public lands. Uh, but whatever was stated in the original plan did not change. Uh, item P. The boundaries of flood hazard areas, hundred year flood elevations. Uh, those have not changed. I know they're annotated on the map, uh, and it looks to be exactly as the original, uh, submission. Item Q, um. If any part of the proposed subdivisions, uh, direct watershed of Great Pond. Um, and again, uh, it's not changed from the original submission. Uh, I don't believe this is in a great pond area from what I saw. But i- in any event, that is not changed from the original submission. Item R, a list of construction items, um. There is not construction that's being proposed in this application. Um, we're just looking at the, uh, um, changes to a lot line. So there's not construction of new roads or anything else that would require financial instruments. And then finally, item S. Location method for disposal of land clearing construction debris, um, there is no new. Uh, land clearing proposed here, and so therefore I don't see any changes from what the original plan was. So, uh, does anyone see section eight point two differently or have any concerns on the board? Okay, I'm not hearing any, uh, section eight point three. Uh, just talks about the approval and filing of this and the steps that are required for the, uh. Uh, the applicant to file, uh, this subdivision. Um, plan with the Knox County. Uh, registry, uh, of deeds. And those are not things that we need to, uh, vote on, but just rather procedures. Of the steps that would be taken after the approval of this site plan. And that is the end of section eight. So once again, is, are there any other concerns, um, about the changes proposed here? Uh, in section and how they relate to section eight? Okay, um, hearing none. Uh, so I think we've gotten through that then, and I think that we have not flagged any issues here. Other than the issue of, um, representation of the owners. And, uh, no, uh, no documentation that grants authority. For, um, Greg to represent the owners of the property that's being impacted here. And so I believe that would be conveyed in a letter from the owners of the property. Stating to the board that, uh, Greg or, um, uh, representative of Greg. Uh, is. Has the authority to represent them in the changes to the subdivision plan and the combination of these two lots. So, um, Orion, suggestions. Would we put this as a condition in the final approval or would we not do the final approval until we receive such a submission?
You could do a condition of approval, um. Or you could do, um, a special meeting, um, and ask for that information to be supplied to the board.
Okay, would the board be okay putting this as a condition of approval that a letter be submitted from the owners of the property? Um, stating that they're aware of the combination of these two properties and they're, uh, they delegated the authority to, uh, Greg or someone else. To represent them, would that be acceptable as a condition of approval?
Yes, I would, I would accept it, but I think we, we ought to put a thirty day time limit on it. Just because that's what everything in, in all the proposals requires, that things be done within thirty days. I know they'll do it, it's just trivial, but we could put it on the letter, that's all.
That, that sounds reasonable. Anyone else on the board, any concerns about putting it on as a condition of approval? Okay, see no other, uh, concerns. So, um, with that, um, let's, let's go back through and, uh, just do our finding of facts. Uh, let's see, we did, we did section nine, so let's do, um, section eight. Uh, we did go through paragraph by paragraph a little bit and talk about the areas that were of concern. Um, I don't wanna go back through, uh, for the, the change that we have here. I don't think we need to go back through on each individual item. For finding a fax, but rather on section, um, section eight as a whole. That the board, as a finding of fact, believes that the applicant has met all the requirements of article eight. In the subdivision ordinance. With a condition that the owners of the. Property concerned here in this application. Send a letter to the town planner indicating their. Desire to combine these two properties that they own and the authority granted. For Greg or Greg's representative to represent them before the planning board. And that this letter shall be received within thirty days of this meeting. Would anyone care to put forward a motion or modify it and put forward a different motion? To that effect?
So moved, Joe.
Okay, so moved to accept that finding of facts. Is there a second?
Can we modify, can we modify it so that it? It mentions Mr. Hilt's participation in this meeting as the representative since. Since the ordinance is asking for the owner's representation here, it. Since the ordinance is asking for the owner's representation here, it really needs to be Mr. Hilt. In the letter specified, not just that they're okay with it, but that he was here and represented them.
Yes, good idea. Okay, so I'll retract. The original motion and since I put together, or the original finding of facts and since I stated it, I will amend it. That the owners would also state that Mr. Hilt. With their knowledge represented them before the planning board on January twenty sixth for the combination of these lots.
Yeah, I'll, I'll withdraw my first motion, Joe, and make the motion that you've just proposed.
I will, I will second.
Proposed by John, seconded by Jan. Any discussion on the finding of facts in the motion? Okay, hearing none.
Oh, wait, Joe, had my hand raised?
Oh, sorry.
I feel like we should note that it. In our finding of facts, it does not meet eight, eight point one D. And I know that has to do with that, but what I just heard from our discussion with the attorney is that we need to identify these things.
Okay, good point. Okay. Um, so. John, you want to attract, retract your original motion, assuming that the, the board is in concurrence with this, this addition?
Yeah, I'll, I'll retract my original mo, my second original motion.
Okay, and so then I will go back and propose that the finding of facts be modified to state that. Paragraph D. Of section eight point one.
One.
Eight point one was not satisfied and the board requested. That a letter be provided by the property owners affected. That states that. I'm sorry, Mr.
Greg Hill.
Ben Hilt.
Hilt, Mr. Hilt was their duly authorized representative. Does that cover it? Victoria, is that, that cover it?
I'd agree to that, yes.
Okay, would anyone care to put forward a motion to accept that finding of fact?
So moved.
Moved by John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Victoria. Any other discussion on the finding of facts as stated? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the finding of facts as stated. Uh, John was off screen, just a second. I can't see. There he is, six, got it. Okay, six zero zero, thank you. Okay, so the finding of facts as stated is approved, the modification to the subdivision. We should go through and do a final approval, I think, on that. I propose that the subdivision changes. As stated. With the condition. Of a letter from the landowners. Described in the finding of facts. Be submitted within thirty days that the board approve this subdivision modification. Is there a motion to approve that?
I will move there.
Okay, move to approve the final subdivision plan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Okay, all in favor, any other discussion on that first? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the subdivision plan as proposed. With the conditions described, be approved. And we've got six zero zero. Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so Mr. Lynch. You understand what you need to do. The plan is approved, it was pretty trivial. We just wanted to make sure all the boxes are checked. And it would be responsible just to make sure that at least the owners of the property are aware of what is going on.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so you could just submit that letter to Orion from the owner and. Again, uh, I didn't state it in the conditions, but I asked. When we're going through it, that you please make sure that the, the reference to the subdivision be consistent by title.
Yes, yep, I've got that note down.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members. Okay, so that's the end of our apps and pre-apps, other business. I've just been busy this month and I haven't gotten a lot accomplished on parking and solar, I got to get back to that. Anybody have any inputs or updates?
I do have something on the parking ordinance, so I'm also working with, so, you know, which all are looking at and then there's all the rest of the other stuff. With the police chief, he and I are looking at it and apparently there's a lot of overlap with what they follow at the state level, so it's going to be condensed and consolidated to reference. Pretty much whatever the state, states, so. That is, it looks like a heavily.
Our screens up here.
It looks like a heavily edited document, but. It, it's really just consolidating everything.
Can somebody mute Ben's computer so I can hear what you're saying or?
I think they just left.
There's still one there.
Um, so I've been working with the police chief, he's been making some edits into the sections that Joe are not looking at, so it's going to be a more reduced ordinance that's more. Defaulting to the state, that's all I said, John.
So it kind of goes without saying, but all I'd ask Orion is that the planning board just get a shot to look at the whole thing with the other inputs in it. I realize that we only have a small part in it, but we'd just kind of like to take a last look at it and I would expect that they would get the same.
Yes.
Okay. Did you, let's see, I, I think last time we also asked at some point that you maybe pass it by. Especially the police chief, our grand plan of looking at road widths and using that as a determining factor. Did you by chance happen to mention it to Randy?
I have mentioned it to him, he is aware that, um, once we, once I finish what I've been with him, then I'll get into that.
Okay, okay, alright. But he didn't say we were crazy or anything yet.
No.
Okay, very good. So let's go back to the minutes now, which actually we pushed from the beginning of the meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at, I think it was the November meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yeah. And are there any other proposed changes to the November minutes?
I'll note that they're very short and sweet.
Yeah, they are. Yep, it was just finding a fax that we looked at, I guess, that meeting. Okay, so here are no comments, all in favor of.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
I'll move that we approved the, I move that we approved the minutes as.
November third, November.
November, November third, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, is there a second? Thomas second, thank you. Any other discussion on that, hearing no discussion, all in favor? Uh, let's see, and this has to be only people that were present. So that would be me, John, Tom, Jeff. And there's me, Tom, John, and yes, so it's four zero zero, thank you.
And we just set a record for approving minutes of the planning board.
Yeah, right, okay, so those minutes are approved four zero zero. Okay, and that's all we've got for this evening, probably the first time we've been out this early in a long time. Anyone have any, anything else for tonight?
Nope.
Okay, thanks very much, everyone, for attending and be safe out there.
Bye, thank you.
Okay, we get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, we have to do that.
A move we adjourned.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Second by Jeff. All in favor.
Who motion?
Jan did nine second.
I second.
Oh, Jeff second.
All in favor. Okay, and the meeting is adjourned at seven fourteen with a vote of six zero zero, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, bye.
See y'all, take care.